Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, this is the May 26th special meeting of Borough Council. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Mr. Allen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nick. The next item on the agenda is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any such comments or questions? Ready? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is to discuss the proposed revisions to the zoning code. I think the goal for our discussion tonight is to resolve any outstanding issues so that Ray and Mike and Kevin can finalize the proposed amendments and we can advertise them for a public hearing. That's, of course, the plan. We'll see if it works out. Mike, anything in particular that you want to start with?
Kevin has a list of items that I guess have been unresolved or have been discussed without council making an affirmative decision on which way they want the document to be published or advertised at this point. Let me pass it on to Kevin for maybe the, let's, we can identify the items that we need to discuss. Discuss those, and if anything else comes up, we can add them to the list.
Cool. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks. So, you know, picking up where we left off, geez, I guess from March was the last time we discussed this as a whole. There were two larger items that we were discussing at those meetings. And I'll start with the first one, and that was the brew pubs, the restaurant pubs, as we have them defined in the ordinance. And there was discussions on how we wanted to regulate those as, and in our original draft, we had them only in the industrial district. And obviously, some discussions went back and forth, and there was a there was an idea to include them in the town center by conditional use. And that's what we've done in this revision here. This draft that is in front of you is not the entire document. It's just the revisions that we made so we could stay focused on them. So here we have the definition of restaurant pub, and it's, and it's the short of the long is that it's controlled by the Pennsylvania Liquor Code, and it's an establishment that sells and serves alcoholic beverage and food for consumption at the premise. So what we've done is we've updated the table on the chart, and I'll scroll to that, is to include them in a restaurant pub as a conditional use in the town center. In the earlier discussions, there was some, some idea to throw around that we were going to include it in the industrial district, but I think that has gone to the wayside. We're going to remove that from the industrial district and just leave it in the town center as conditional use. So once the decision is complete and made, we'll remove that X here from industrial district.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin. So let's start there. Anyone have any comments on the current brew pub standard, which would be allowing them in town center as a conditional use?
Mr. Galley, this is Lisa Dorsey.
Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
And maybe someone can explain to me, because I'm not sure I understand, why the brew pubs are conditional use versus permitted use similar to other bars and restaurants?
Yeah, that's a great question, Lisa. I mean, that's really a, that's really up for council to decide. From my perspective, I would have them be a permitted use. But I, I think there are others who would have them not be permitted at all. And so the conditional use process would be, you know, a sort of a compromise. You're allowed to do it, but subject to certain conditions. But I guess, does anyone else think that we should move that into the permitted use column?
Mr. Galley?
Yeah, Nick.
I, I agree with you on that point. And I did have one question about the industrial areas. Is that currently conditional use, or is it just disallowed?
That's a better question for Kevin.
Yeah, no, we, so it wasn't, it wasn't clearly defined. What we, in our original draft, the zoning task force had made the recommendation that we're going to move these brew pubs, these brewery restaurants into the industrial district. If you recall, in the very early draft, the discussion was that we were going to leave them in the town center, but set them as a conditional use. Now, what we are going to leave in the industrial district, which is by right, will be a straight brewery operation. That's where no food and beverage will be served. It's strictly manufacturing of the beverages. And that would be a permitted use by right in the industrial district. Going back to the question about the conditional use in the, in the previous meetings and discussions, and you'll see it on the screen in front of you, are the standards and criteria for the pub restaurants. This is language that Mr. Estee had drafted up, and it was from our standard agreements that we have with a lot of the liquor licenses. And we also have, in the past, with the few brew pubs that we have in town, we have had them voluntarily sign these agreements, and these are the requirements right out of those standard agreements that Mr. Estee has drafted up in the past.
Let me just add one thing to that, Kevin. Under the liquor code, a brewery that's a manufacturing facility is permitted to have, I wouldn't call it a restaurant, but they're permitted to serve food as part of the brewery. So that would be the only possibility that you could have a food establishment in the industrial district. I mean, I think it's unlikely that somebody builds a brewery down there, but it is a possibility. And I just wanted the council to know that you could have a eating establishment with that brewery under the liquor code.
And that's specific to the industrial district, right, Tom?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Galley? I had like one more part to that question. Just in, and you're almost answered it with the industrial zone. So in my mind, I'm thinking of like, it's, so in the industrial zone, a brewery has, has the right to have a brewery there. And with, I guess, I've been trying to do my homework on this. I missed a couple of meetings, but I've been listening to them. They are allowed due to some recent changes, right, to serve food if they are a brewery, regardless of where they might be in the borough. Is that, did I understand that right?
Let me try to clarify that. A brewery, prior to the recent amendments to the liquor code, a brewery was allowed, like Victory Brewery, for example, in Downingtown. They have a restaurant, and they historically were allowed to do that before the amendments to the liquor code. When they amended the liquor code a few years ago, they added new types of licenses, which are called limited distillery, a brewery storage license. And those, though, if, if, if a owner is using that kind of license, then those facilities would only be permitted in the town center by conditional use as it's currently drafted. So Sterling Pig is an example. The new restaurant that Mercado is opening on Church Street is an example of a restaurant using those limited licenses.
My question's about the industrial use. So if there is a brewery in the industrial zone, what rights do they have to serve food and alcohol there?
They have the right under the liquor code as a brewery licensee to serve food and liquor and, and beer.
Okay. And that's, to be a brewery in the industrial zone right now, that is permitted? They are able to do that?
Well, that's a good question. It, it's probably, it would be considered an industrial use, and it, it may already be permitted in the industrial zone. But Kevin could probably speak better to that.
Okay. And just, I guess I'll finish here. For the record, I'm happy with that in the industrial zone. If something popped up there, I'd probably go. And I'm happy in the town center for permitted use as well. But that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Hey, Lisa, while we're still talking about this, I don't want to make any assumptions about your earlier comment, but I'm assuming from it that you would, you would be in support of breweries in town center as a permitted use?
That's correct, Mike.
Anyone else on council want to weigh in on, on this issue?
Yes.
Go ahead, Bill.
For Tom Estee, if Westchester wants to allow breweries, but wants to not allow the restaurant accompanying the brewery, why isn't that doable? Why can't we say in the industrial district breweries are permitted by, by right? However, no, no restaurant goes with it. Why can't we do that?
Well, because we don't have the authority to regulate the use of the license. In other words, we do have the authority to make zoning decisions. We can say, we're not allowing a restaurant in a certain zoning district. But we don't have a right to say, you can only use part of your license. In other words, that's, that's within the purview of the Liquor Control Board. And it's basically a preemption issue.
Okay.
So to Bill's question, basically, we have a yes or no option in the industrial district. We can say yes to breweries, but that comes with it their right to serve food and beer. Or we could say no entirely. Is that?
Well, you could say no entirely, but then...
It would have to be permitted somewhere.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, I, I think we have to keep in mind that there, there's the possibility that a strict, straight brewing operation, you know, it could be a possibility. And then, you know, that, the only place for that would be the industrial district.
That's a good point, Kevin. Or, I mean, candidly, you know, something in between the two, like Levante has down at their facility. They, they brew, they serve, but they don't have food. They have food trucks, but that's different.
But it is within the realm of possibility. For example, Iron Hill just opened a brewery in a shopping center in Euclid Township. So, and, and that facility is primarily a brewery. Serve food and beer, but the food is not like the food menu you have in Westchester. So it is a possibility.
I, I would, right, and I would make a suggestion that if you were going to have what Tom just explained, where the main operation is a brewery, manufacturing the food, but they're going to have an accessory use, which would follow more lines of the pub restaurant, then they would still have to meet this criteria for the, for the uses that are similar to the ones in town center.
Michael Galley?
Yeah, Bill.
Can a decision be made about town center, what we want in the town center?
Yeah, so I, I should have said this at the outset, but with respect to these outstanding issues, we need to decide tonight how to direct Tom and Ray and Kevin to move forward so that they can draft the ordinance for advertising. Because, you know, if, if we change our mind after the ordinance has been advertised and posted, we have to restart the whole process, re-advertise and have another public hearing, you know, which of course is our prerogative. But the goal of tonight is to make those decisions so that everyone knows what to put in that proposed ordinance that we're going to advertise for adoption. So I guess, Bill, the question then falls to you and Bernie and Don, you know, what your thoughts are with respect to the town center piece. Permitted use, not permitted use, or conditional use with respect to breweries? Let's start there.
Conditional use.
Don and Bernie?
This is Don. I would prefer permitted use in town and by right in the industrial district. That's my preference.
When you say permitted use in town, do you mean subject to these conditions?
Yeah, sure. It's just, I, I, I think John O'Brien has expressed concern about, you know, the state of our businesses. And I think his, his point is well taken. Yes, these criteria, sure. But conditional use, I think that just adds a whole another level of complexity that isn't perhaps really needed.
I mean, these are the criteria that we would enforce on potential breweries through the conditional use process. You know, they would have to essentially make an application, demonstrate that they're going to meet these criteria. And if they do, then, you know, we say yes and, and move on. Whereas the other option is a, a use by right, where, you know, they rent the building and they put the brewery there and, you know, pay their business license and, and all's good. Does that make sense, Don?
Yeah.
Mr. Galley?
One second, Bill. So you're in favor of the conditions, though, Don?
Yes.
Okay. Let me hear from Bernie first, real quick. Bill?
I just unmuted, Michael. I'm in favor of conditional use.
Great. We've really, we've really started with a home run. That's three for by right, three for conditional use. And unfortunately, Mike Stefano couldn't be here, so.
Let, let me, let, let me jump in and just add a little context to maybe how we got here. The, the committee that drafted the original revisions to the zoning code followed the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan committee, when they drafted that, wanted to stop, if I could use the word proliferation of bars and restaurants in the town center. I have too many. And to Don's point, the state of our existing bars and restaurants are not affected by anything the council does with this ordinance moving forward. Everybody that has their license, keeps their license, and can continue to operate exactly the way they are today. So that, that's what got us here. The original draft had, you know, no drinking establishments in the town center. Council for years has always fought every license that comes in. The conditions, as Kevin said earlier, are conditions that Tom Estee has negotiated with every bar and brew pub that's come into the borough for the past, I don't know, three, four, or five years. So that's, that's what got us here.
That, that's helpful. Thank you, Mike. I don't want to guess what...
I'm sorry, Mike. And I would only add one other thing, and I think I said this last time. Some of the licensees have refused to agree to these conditions. Most...
In the past, you mean?
In the past, correct. So, and then one other thing, I suppose, I haven't thought this entirely through, but you could permit these by right, but still subject to these conditions. For example, similar to other regulations that any use would have to comply with, this use would have to comply with these conditions. And that would be determined at an administrative level by the zoning officer.
I mean, that, that to me sounds like a win-win, in all honesty, Tom. Because, you know, not to put words in Don's mouth, but it sounded like Don liked the conditions, but not the conditional use process. And that would certainly satisfy me that they wouldn't have to go through the process, hire a lawyer, you know, come to, pay to come to a hearing, but they'd still have to follow these conditions. So if you think we can do it that way, I think we have majority support for that approach. Before we go any further, though, I should open this up to public comment. I know Mr. O'Brien wants to speak, and then we'll see if anybody else wants to speak on this.
Mr. President, is it okay if I go, or?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, John. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I won't take much time because I appreciate council's consideration. I agree with Mr. Estee's. I think that would be a fair middle ground. The only thing I would suggest to council, number three there about the service and consumption of alcoholic beverage shall occur inside the buildings. I would just suggest with the movement towards outside dining, cafe dining, there might be, you know, a, a little tweaks to that to permit the, you know, when you're having a dinner outside, as far as the other cafe standards that we currently hold. Otherwise, I think Mr. Estee has a good idea.
Yeah.
Sorry to jump.
I was just going to say, could we just add to that or other location approved by, you know, the borough?
Yeah, there, that would, we'd have to look at that a little further. I think that would necessitate a, an amendment to Chapter 98 because the restaurant café has a geographical limitation to it. So you have the brew pubs, like on Haddon Avenue, a wrong crowd and artillery. They are outside of the café district. So they would not be permitted to obtain approval for outdoor dining. Thus, they could not have outdoor alcohol consumption.
Well, but if we added, if we added to that section or other area approved by the borough, that would, you know, that would mean wrong crowd couldn't get the approval through the café process, but Sterling Pig could, for instance.
Yes. Yeah, we, yeah, I think we could do that. I think you, you basically say, you know, any license that happens where the cafes are permitted, they can have outdoor dining in accordance with the café regulations, and ones that are outside of that cannot. And I think...
I guess, I guess Section 3 could say like, or as otherwise permitted by the borough code.
Well, the difficulty with that is, is it's too subjective. In other words, you can't just impose a provision that council gets to decide whether you have outdoor dining or not.
No, no, I'm not suggesting that, Tom. I'm, I'm suggesting we just reference elsewhere in the code.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, where outside dining under the café processes is permitted. And that, that's a pretty easy fix, and I think that makes sense. Like, you know, if you put something in a restaurant space now that allows outside dining, I don't see why we wouldn't allow that here, so.
Yeah, I guess, maybe I'm a little confused. It sounded as though Mr. O'Brien was pushing for brew pubs that may be outside of the café district to be allowed to have consumption of beverages outside.
I, I mean, the bid territory is pretty much encapsulated within the café district already, so I'm going to be okay with, you know, as far as the bid perspective, with that current, you know, where they're currently allowed to set up as a café, or apply for a café permit.
Was there anything else on this topic, John, that you wanted to speak about?
No, I just really appreciate, I know it's, I've been bugging a lot of you, and I really do appreciate the hard work and consideration here. I think it will help town in the long run.
Thanks, John. Pat Comerford?
Yes, hello.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to echo John's comments. As a commercial property owner, you know that I've all contacted you with emails and letters about my concerns for the future of my building and, and the success of our town. And to reiterate, just to reiterate, I'm just thinking about, I know the conditional use process, and it's basically a hearing, which anybody can appeal. And whoever sometimes has the most money wins if they don't want something to happen. So I, I do encourage this permitted use with conditions are fine, but not for a hearing where someone can appeal, and appeal, then someone eventually runs out of money. And it's usually the entrepreneur or the startup. So I hope you will consider that, and I appreciate everything that John said and everything you're doing to try to make market property owners future a little brighter. We've been through a pandemic, and, and it's tough to make new decisions when nobody knows the outcome of what's going to happen to a lot of businesses in town. So I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Pat. Tom, I've got good news. Paragraph 3 already says exactly what we needed to say.
And the reason...
Bill, I repeat again, it says exactly, exactly what we need. So great, great job.
Thanks.
So anyone else from the public want to speak on this issue? All right, I'm going to kick this back to council. We have a bit of a compromise proposal by Tom that this be a permitted use subject to these criteria. Is there anyone on council that's adamantly opposed to that solution?
I'm going to say yes, so I can ask a question.
I, I mean, you could ask the question either way, Bill, but go ahead.
Well, my experience is that when we grant a permission for a liquor establishment in town, there are any number of people that come to council and oftentimes are critical and they're, don't want the establishment, or they want to be sure that certain problems don't occur. And they offer conditions. We're taking that all away? Is that it?
Well, I mean, technically, through a, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, or Kevin, but technically, through a conditional use process, we wouldn't necessarily be allowed to just add additional conditions because somebody came to a meeting with a good idea.
We've done it in the past.
Well, there is, there is some of that latitude in the conditional use process that, that the governing body, in this case, the council, can impose conditions which aren't expressly in the ordinance, but are for the purpose of, you know, consistent with the zoning ordinance and its policies. So there is some opportunity for that.
Okay.
And may I say, Mr. Galley, that the hobgoblin of appeals and appeals and appeals may not be so real. I mean, most of the time, it's a negotiated thing. And I don't, I can't recall any liquor establishment not being allowed because there was a difference of opinion concerning the conditions. If the applicant has real good reason not, not to want a certain condition, and then council can say, okay, well, we don't have to do it this time. And sometimes there's a, a additional conditions that may be not in here. There, there are 10 here, as I see it. I don't know, like, if it's right next to a church, you could say, no, no serving of alcohol beverages till 1:00 p.m. Of course, there's religious freedom stuff in there, and yeah, but that, that's what I'm getting at is I, I don't see why, I think we should have conditional use, period. In, in other words, we don't have conditional use, and we have this. Kevin Gore decides whether the applicant is in compliance, is in compliance with all 10 of these conditions. Is that what we're, is that what he's saying, contrary to what I just said?
Yeah, which would be his job regardless of the process, right? We'd still be looking to Kevin to tell us if all of these things were met. We'd still be looking to Kevin to tell us if all of these things were met. Um.
Yeah, I mean, if they went to a conditional use hearing, we would still have to ensure compliance with any conditions that were established at that hearing. But I think, I think the Bill, Bill's point is, you know, by making it by right, with the conditions, you can't have additional conditions. But um, I mean, I, Bill, I feel pretty comfortable with the conditions we have or uh, you know, I, I think all the conditions we've imposed over the years based on council's concerns and uh, and neighbors and businesses' concerns also. But I think, you know, I actually think this is a, a pretty good compromise.
Yeah, I think unless I hear something different from Nick or Lisa, based on my and, and Don's feelings along with them, it seems like we have majority support to move forward with Tom's suggestion. But I'll, I'll give Nick or Lisa, if Nick's back, hey, he had to restart his computer, a chance to, to weigh in if they're opposed to this plan.
Yeah, I came, came back to a compromise, but I think it's what I'm happy with. So, sounds good to me.
Cool.
So what we are saying is that they are permitted by right uh, in accordance with these standards and criteria.
Yes.
But it doesn't have to be. Don't we have to have a hearing anyway? I mean, i- i- I think that's in, in the um liquor code, that the applicant has to go to the municipality and ask uh for their blessing, as it were.
That's right. That, Bill, that's only in certain circumstances. If it's a transfer of a license from. So this kind, this kind of license, these new licenses created for the limited brewery, distillery, they don't need council approval for the license.
I see. And so all right, so a- a- and that's what this is limited to? Just the new ones coming in?
This is limited to, a- and Kevin pointed this out earlier, a brewery that has a, I call it an eating facility or what they call a storage license or a limited distillery or a limited winery.
And council doesn't get a chance to uh say whether, to, to rule on that at all?
That, that, that decision is made by the liquor control board. In other words, we only have, say, over certain licenses, an economic development license or a transfer from a license of a restaurant license from another municipality because we're over the quota. And as said earlier, these are the kinds of conditions that we always imposed on those transfers and the economic development license.
Suppose somebody just wants to open a bar without any brewery or distillery attached to it. Uh, what process do they go through? They're not transferring it. It's a, it's a brand new license.
Well, all the, all the Pennsylvania liquor license are really based on selling food. That you, you, you can't just open a bar and just serve booze or liquor. You have to sell food. So they have to be licensed initially by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And these, I call them special licenses. They have specific requirements about what kind of products you can sell. You have to sell at least fifty percent of your own product. So your beer.
Tom, Bill was asking about a general liquor license, not a brewery liquor license.
Right, a restaurant liquor license, you have to, you can sell anything and you have to get that from the L C B, L C B. And in order to get one in the borough now, you'd have to come before council for a transfer.
Which, which is why, for instance, when Sedona was coming in.
Correct.
They had to come in front of council and we imposed similar conditions.
Yeah, and I, I say that, that's assuming the law doesn't change. That's the current state of the liquor code.
All right, um, I think we have a consensus on this. So Kevin, what's the uh, next item on the uh, the to be discussed agenda?
Yeah, the next item is the median lot size discussion. Uh, we didn't get a clear consensus on that. However, uh, we did have some discussions with the task force and we did speak to a couple of the stakeholders and got a couple of good suggestions. And we did, uh, one, one of the, one of the biggest issues that we didn't see when we initially, initially came up with the median lot size was these newer developments, um, similar to the new Ryan Homes development down on East Bernard. Uh, those are all condo, so they don't have individual parcels. So in those cases, and you'll see here, um, letter C on the screen here. So when there's multiple dwelling units on a single parcel, uh, what we'll do is we will take the overall parcel size and we will divide that by the number of dwelling units that's on that parcel to come up with the average for that lot. Um, and then we will use that to calculate the median lot size with the other lots that are on that block. Um, so you can see here the criteria that we've included just based on those discussions we had to make it a little clearer when um, calculating that minimum uh, median lot size on uh, certain blocks and we have specific criteria that is uh, presented on those block faces.
So just by way of example, and so I understand it, so for like the Claude Rains property on South Church Street, there, I think there are five townhomes and the house itself. So we would take, you know, the one acre or whatever it is and divide it by six to get the average uh, lot size for that parcel.
Right, so we, that would, so if there were six dwelling units there, that includes the mansion. So we would divide it by six and then we would use that median, that, that average lot size.
Gotcha.
And we would take that six times and put that into the median calculation with the other lots that are on that block face.
Okay. Uh, that makes sense to me. Um, any, any questions from council about the median lot size calculation as it's uh, on the screen currently? Yeah, Bill. Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, just how I understand it from a very basic reason for this is so that you can't get a structure in a block that's outsized, it's too big. Isn't that what this is all about?
Not, I'm not sure I understand the context of your question, Bill. It's, this kind, the, the reasoning for the median lot size is to a, a, align and have more greater consistency of the lots that are on a block face.
I'm sorry, my head was in the um the, the size of the structure. The lot, I, I get, but so the, the lot size has to be, has to fit into the block.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Galley?
Yeah, go ahead, Nick.
Thanks. Um, I have a series of questions here. I'll try to be quick, but um, especially with this, I think the um provisions about the condos, I think is excellent. I'm really encouraged to hear that. Um, my, it's kind of a, I could probably spend more time wording this question better, but um, I'm going to go for it. Would this prevent something like Union Station happening again?
N- n- not, um, as far as the number of dwelling units or how they are arranged?
Yeah, that is kind of a two-part question. So I, I'd say for this conversation, probably the number of dwelling units is more pertinent.
It, um, I, I don't know, Nick. I'd have to, i- it's all going to be dependent upon the um minimum lot size that is, is required for that block. So we'd have to do the calculation to determine how many dwelling units are going to be allowed on one lot.
But for that, so with this condo provision, I'm assuming that is another development that would have been impacted by this. You would take the number of units and then divide that out and that would be your lot size that you'd use for the median?
Right, so i- if you have if you have, um, let's take that Union Station for a good example. So if you were to take that entire block face and we've, and just arbitrary numbers, if the median lot size along that block face was point two acre, then we would take the entire lot that is Union Station and divide it by point two to determine how many dwelling units they could put on there.
Okay, and I'm trying to think, so does this, the minimum, does this, does the minimum lot width um, inform that decision as well? Cause that, what is that, eighty, eighty feet now? What is it?
Um, bear with me. I, I'd have to pull up the ordinance, Nick, to uh. No, it's not eighty foot, but the, the minimum lot width varies from district to district.
Okay, maybe I'm just thinking about N C two. I don't. I don't know.
Right, yeah, right now, uh, according to the different block classes, there are different um, lot widths. But now that we're doing away with the block classes, um, you'll have, have a standard lot width. So here's N C one, for instance. You'll have a standard lot width of sixty feet.
And this is, this is current, but the proposed, is the proposed the eighty feet?
No, no, this is the proposed in front of you right here.
So it's proposed, okay.
But that's for, that's for N C one. That's for N C one. Scroll down, N C two. And then C three. Here's an N C three. And then you have the different types of dwelling units.
Okay.
And then N C two, Nick, that's where you live in the N C two district, I believe, right? Mm-hmm. Here you go, right here is uh, the three different types of dwelling units. So. The townhouses would be twenty feet in width. Right.
Okay, and then I think the other thing I was interested in was um, there was a map that you pulled up before and before I restarted my computer, I had it up with the name of the file and I can't, I can't find it anymore, but it was, I think Ray uh, made it and it was kind of like this yellow, orange and brown over a white background and it was showing where further subdivisions could be done as a result of the zoning update. It might have been like the breakout map or something I build out. That's the one. And can you just walk me through really, really quickly, like in the east end, like between like Minor and Bernard around Adams and Worthington? Um, what, what could we expect to happen uh, in the east end with the new, with the, because I, Bill Scott, I agree with you. We need to be a little cognizant of our own, own turf about this.
Can, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
Am I, am I muted or am I?
We, we got you.
Okay. The, I didn't really mean this map for publication. As you can see, there's Xs on it and everything. I developed this. It was really complicated uh, because we had to actually calculate. Whoops. What's going on here? We had, we had to calculate the uh the lot widths on each of the blocks and, and uh things of that nature to come up with this. And then it, it's all done with the G I S system and when it a, a lot, all the properties you see have Xs in them, were properties that for some reason, that the G I S just couldn't pick up. And I'll use the Market Street example uh, on, on the right at the, at the Melton Center because that one's proposed for development. So in this exercise, we showed that, that there could be uh, new lots on that block, that obviously there couldn't. So, but I was, when, when we did this, it was really in response to the, to the fact, are we actually causing more or less dwelling units to be built in the borough? And uh, the, the result of that analysis was it, it's kind of a moot point. The, the, it's about the same. There, there was a redistribution of where they would occur, but the total numbers worked out to be about the same.
Okay.
That's what they are now.
And, and I understand that that was, that was the mountain center with that X on it and various public parks or half the football field or whatever. But um, I, I'm just a little more concerned with those other smaller units in my ward. Um, I just want to know like what the ramifications are um, for people on that block and what they might expect to see um, if we do change the zoning in this way.
Yeah. Again, I, well, if you, if you look down in your area, you could look at the, at the, at, at the uh the color of the units as they're called out. And i- if, if you scroll under the bottom there, uh Kevin, the, 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 on the yellow, it means one to two more units on the, and the, and the various shades of brown, it can three to five, six to eleven, twelve to eighteen, and nineteen to thirty. So that's what the color code means. And uh, and again, th- these are calculations, gross calculations based on the G I S and an, and a statistical analysis of, of those areas. You really don't know for sure until you actually look at one block and, 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 and do the calculation. But what, where, what area, you're talking about Worthington and what?
Um, basically ju- just south of the mountain center in, in that box.
Right, it's on the other side. Uh, so the block between Minor and Bernard, you mean in there?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you can see there, there's a couple of yellow ones, meaning that those lots could be subdivided.
And so it would just go from one lot to two, basically, if that's what that.
They would go, they would go from one lot to two lots.
Okay.
And, and, and again, there might be some other parameters that would prevent them from being subdivided. I, I don't know without looking at it specifically, but, but when, when you're doing this, this kind of analysis, the planners like us call build out analysis. And, and you typically want to do that to, to, to give uh, uh, people uh an estimate of, of what the likely impact of a zoning ordinance is. And, and so this is what we're doing. And, and so you can see there, there's, there's like in that, on that block between Minor and, and Everhart, or excuse me, I, I, or in Bernard, there's six or, six or seven lots that could be subdivided.
Sure. So I, I guess, the way I just, I want to make sure I'm reading the map right. Um, um, nothing on here is freaking me out, just to be clear, but um.
Nothing what?
No, I said, none of this here is like scaring me or freaking me out. I just want to be clear about that. But if your point of view is that subdivision is very bad, that you can look at this map as like a worst case scenario, basically.
You can't what?
I said, if your point of view is that you want to avoid subdivision, you can look at this map as a worst case scenario.
I, oh, I, I could do the same map for your existing zoning ordinance and it would look very similar.
I thought this was like a delta, like a difference between the two.
Huh?
No, this is, this is what the new standard would allow for. Not a, not a compare to the existing versus new.
And, and it's, it's, it's important that this is not anything official. This was just for, for in for, in information purposes only.
Right.
And, and, and we did run one just like this under the existing zoning in order to come up with the numbers. But the, under the existing zoning, I don't, I don't, I forget if we generated a map for it. I think we might have just done a statistical analysis of the of the parcel.
Can I, can I just clarify one point?
Yes.
To make sure I'm understanding. If we look, for instance, at the lot under the Mountain Center Development.
Yes.
Uh, southeast corner, you know, that's highlighted as yellow from a median lot size perspective, but there may be other restrictions in the zoning code that would prevent that from being subdivided. For instance, if it's only thirty-eight feet wide, you couldn't subdivide it into two nineteen-foot parcels.
Correct.
Is that fair? Okay.
That we did, when we did the analysis for the median lot size, we, we looked at that. You know, we, we calculated what the lot width uh, is and, and what that would allow.
Okay, so this would take that into consideration, but not necessarily some other potential restrictions?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so between, between now and a public hearing, could I, would you be able to just send me both versions, the before and after? Or the current and proposed, I suppose? Or the current and proposed, I suppose? Just for my being informed?
Yeah, I think we had, I think they have a, uh, may have not been a map of the existing, Nick. But there was a comparison of how many lots could be divided today. And this map that shows how many could be divided if this. Uh, change was made and they were very similar.
Okay, yeah, I'm just interested in seeing what that, that changes.
The areas right here.
Okay. Gotcha, all right, that, that helps me out, I'm not trying to keep this here all night, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, Nick, any other questions on council on the median lot size, uh, issue? Any questions from anyone else on this issue?
I have a related question.
Yeah, who?
Excuse me?
Is this Joanne?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Um, when, when you look at the zoning code update. It clearly allows subdivisions of properties in ways that we don't in our current code. Is the Borough Council? Okay with having subdivisions of front yards and backyards? Uh, et cetera. Because now you, with having the definition of. Uh, multiple front yards on a property. You can subdivide differently and pretty much carve up property. Are you, is council thinking about how that will impact especially the larger properties in the borough?
I, I'm not entirely sure if that's accurate, so I'd like to hear from Ray or. Uh. Kevin on that, you're muted, Ray.
Yeah, I, I was, we had a really difficult time hearing Joanne.
So her question was that the change would allow for. Multiple lots, uh, that wouldn't have to front onto a, an existing street. I don't necessarily think that that's accurate, but.
No, that's, that is not accurate, if you have, if you, you can't. You can't subdivide a lot where it's going to have a primary facade on a, an alley.
So, yeah, I think her, her question was it would allow for. Yeah, and there are lots, Joanne, that have frontage on, like, for instance. In my neighborhood, there are some lots that have, the front yard is Union Street and the backyard is Dean Street. You could divide those potentially in half. But that's because the front yard, you know, you don't get a front yard backyard, you just end up with. A new lot on Dean Street and one on Union Street, not a situation where you have a, a house fronting on an alley and a house fronting on. Union Street, in my example. Does that answer your question, Joanne?
Does this work better for you?
It's a little better, it's a little echoey, but, but let's see if we can make it work.
Yeah. Looking at the. Uh, wait a minute. Okay, looking at, for example, properties, look at Tony Morris's property. He's a three-fronted yo- property, isn't he?
Uh, I don't know where Tony Morris lives.
Um. Tony lives on the corner, Tony has the big white house that's on North High Street. That has the white pillars.
North High Street with the white. Uh, setback across from the golf course, you mean?
Yes.
Corner of Ashbridge.
Yes, on Ashbridge, so he would be at.
Yeah, that, that lot would theoretically have three streets.
And I don't know if you asked a question, uh, Joanne, but. If they, if they were able, if they were able to subdivide that property and put. Two more houses there theoretically, not saying they can. But they could have one house front each of those streets. The primary streets, not an alley.
I mean, for a property like that, you could hypothetically. Have a number of houses fronting Ashbridge Street, for instance, but. I don't, I doubt that that's any different based on these changes than it is today.
Yeah, the current zoning code today would allow. Multiple lots. Uh, as long as they, you know, faced on a street. Uh, because you have a, a minimum lot width at the street line. Give a m- minimum lot width, and then you're going to have lot averaging.
That was like that, that's sort of like the whole problem we have with the Barclay grounds is that. They were able to put a number of houses facing the, the three different streets that they had.
Yeah.
Uh.
Unless you came out with a pure prohibition of subdivi- subdividing lots, you're always going to be able to subdivide certain lots.
Which I, you may be able to sell me on, Mike. Uh, the. Yeah, I don't think the analysis of, of properties like that one is any different, but, uh, if Ray or Kevin. Or Tom or Mike has a different take on that.
Mr. Gailey.
Yeah, Bill.
Uh, i- i- if, um. Ray Ott is still on the line, Ray Ott did a building plan for the Zookin property, which is across. Ashbridge from, uh. Tony Morris's house. And. He had, I think, a couple of other houses like in the front yard, I mean. Under current zoning, I assume we can. Those properties can be subdivided, it's not that I would want them to, but. Uh, that's where I think we stand, and as a matter of fact, we had a fight about, uh. Making a, uh. An entryway. Uh, on North High Street that would prohibit, uh, building more to a certain depth on, uh. On North High Street to try and, uh, uh, keep that nice vista the way it is. I hope that helps somewhat.
I thought that in our current zoning code, we could not subdivide the width of properties only from front to back on the length of properties. And the update allows you to do the width of properties as well. Or am I incorrect?
The, I, this is Ray, I, I had my cell phone muted, I'm sorry. Um, the, the, you can, i- i- if you have a lot frontage, you can subdivide. On, on any of those streets, the, the, this ordinance, uh, does specifically state about subdividing a lot. Uh, between an alley and, and a, and a, and the principal street. And, and creating additional lots, but it, it doesn't say anything about, and, and nor does the existing ordinance. And, and, uh, Bill, Bill Scott's correct, I'm trying to remember the name of that. That property on, on Goshen Road and High Street, but, but, but I worked on a subdivision for that a long time ago. And, uh, we didn't. Put houses along High Street, we kept the, the front yard because the owner, Chris Lang, didn't want to, uh, to do it that way. So we, we subdivided that lot and, and there was, uh, I guess, one or two big houses built up on the hill. And, and set them back, uh, to match the others, but, but that lot could have, that property could have been subdivided, I think, to create six lots or something like that. And we, we only ended up doing three of them, but, um. This, this ordinance wouldn't affect, uh, to use Morris's property as an example, it doesn't affect, uh, the subdivision of his.
Well, no, I'm, I'm referring to in general. I thought that our current code did not allow us to subdivide by width. But it did by length, meaning front to back.
I. The, no, you're, you're, that's not correct, there's nothing in there. I, and I, I don't know how you're describing width, I mean, the Mars property is a corner property, it has, it has two, it has three frontages.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's exactly the point, is that if you stand on High Street, you know, the, the width is High Street and the length is Ashbridge. If you stand on Ashbridge, the width is Ashbridge and the length is High Street. Uh, for any property on a corner, that's, that's always been the case and will continue to be the case.
Yeah, and, and we, we. Made the new zoning to be consistent with the SADO. So it says that, yeah, a, a newly created lot, it has, it has to be, if it's subdivided, it has to front on the primary street. You can't create a new lot to face on an alley. If you have, and the, and the SADO ordinance says this, if you have an existing lot. Where it only fronts on the alley, then you're permitted to develop that. And we, and we, and we copied the language from the SADO, put that into the zoning, so they were consistent.
Okay. But am I correct that our streets and alleys differentiated?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
All right, any other, thank you, Joanne, any other questions from anyone on council or? Anyone else in attendance about the median lot size as it is currently being presented to us? All right, it, it sounds like, um. You know, given this, I, I'm getting the sense that the way you've, you've proposed this, uh. Is acceptable to council, so, um. What is the next item on? Our agenda, Kevin?
Mr. Gailey?
Yeah, Bill.
Uh, so we jumped from, uh, to go back from. Allowing brew pubs in the. Town Center District, then we got into a big discussion on the conditional use and so forth and so on. Uh, I had wanted council to consider allowing brew pubs in the commercial district. And the mixed-use district, and, uh. I would like to do that, can I do that now? It won't take me long to explain it.
Yeah, sure.
Well, uh, you got to look at the map. You know. Where the commercial district, uh, especially down here.
Do you have this map handy, Bill? Are you running the computer, Bill?
I, I, I'll get it, Mr. Gailey, I'll pull it up, give you one, Kevin has it, Mike.
Anyway, uh.
Pull the map up, Bill, so just, you know, go for it, but we'll look at the map when you get there.
All right, the, consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, the idea is to build up the Market Gay Corridor. Going to the east from Town Center. Uh, reason being is it takes pressure off development in the Town Center, it, um. I- 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 if it's developed, uh. There'll be more customers, presumably, for business in the Town Center. And, uh. It's not a very attractive. Area now, in the way it's been developed, and I, I would think we, if we put. Allowed brew pub in that area, one or two might pop up and, and help with the development there, and, uh.
You know, Bill?
Yeah, I, I just think about this, look at the mud, the mud farm across the street from Borough Hall, now that's. That is. In the commercial district. And, and, uh, what's wrong with a brew pub there? I think it'd be, uh, uh, we're missing an opportunity, it's another, uh.
I suspect a number of our borough employees would very much enjoy having a brew pub across the street.
Well, I mean, uh, councilmen might walk across the street even, even during meetings. But anyway, that's my thoughts, I'd like, I'd like.
I think your point is.
My colleagues to consider that.
I think your point is well taken, especially as to the CS district. I'm not so sure it makes as much sense in the mixed-use district, that's kind of a. You know. I'm not sure that we have sidewalk coverage all through that area, you know, so. People walking home may not have a easy access to those locations, but I don't think the same is true for the CS district.
Well, i- if we could just, uh, focus then on the commercial district, there's one on the west side of town as well, and it's kind of out where, uh. The two brew pubs are now, and the thought, according to Adam Wetzel, he, he, he likes more brew pubs. And, uh, and I listen to him because he. He's just a respected, uh. Brew pub owner in town, restaurateur. And the more. The more of them you have, the more, um, it will draw people into Westchester. We have several now, and I think, uh. I was against them in the Town Center, but I've changed my mind now that I talked to Adam and I went to a few and had a few beers. I'd like to see them out in the, in the red, too. So, that's my, that's my, uh, point up for discussion.
Anyone else on council, uh, I'm, I'm, that's fine with me, anyone else on council have a, a. Opinion on allowing that in the CS district? I'm going to assume silence is consent. That is often the case when we do this remotely, uh. I, I don't know if Kevin, Ray, or, or Mike, or Tom, any of you want to weigh in on this?
Well, this is right, I, I can just say it's an easy edit, it's just putting an X in a column.
Yeah, it's, well, we have, we, yeah, we'd have to move some X's around, I think originally, when we were. Discussing this as a committee, uh, we looked at the comprehensive plan, I think there were some comments in the comprehensive plan. You know, about limiting the liquor establishments and trying to concentrate them in one area. Um, right now, you cannot have, and we have it defined as a licensed restaurant, one that holds a liquor license. Um, they're not permitted in the commercial service, so we wanted to try to keep them all within the Town Center. Um, but if Borough Council wants to change that, that's not a problem, like Ray said, it's an easy edit.
Yeah, I, I would only, I'm sorry. This is Ray just saying, I, I, putting on another hat, I, I would endorse that also, I think that's a. It's a, it's a logical extension of that use.
Well, to Bill's point, it is kind of consistent, it, it, this is where the comprehensive plan may butt heads a little bit, because on the one hand. We want to drive development down that corridor on each end, and on the other hand, we may want to limit. Establishments, but I think to Bill's point, you know, if, if a place like Mackenzie's. Uh, you know, wanted to build one of their locations across from Borough Hall, boy, would that be an upgrade, right? Good luck getting the lot, but, um.
Well, if I may, Michael, I just want to make sure I understand what we're talking about. Are you talking about? The pub restaurant in the CS? Or are you talking about? Basically any liquor establishment in the CS?
I think we're just talking about the pub restaurant.
Okay, and I.
Discussion we had earlier.
Okay, I would only add that, of course, it's a policy decision. But when we discussed this at the committee, we were trying to follow the comprehensive plan. And remember, your police department has historically said. We don't want to spread these things out, so that's just something to consider.
Well, I, I, I chaired the, uh, comprehensive plan committee, and, uh. I, I don't, I don't recall that, wh- what you said, I don't think there's any, I think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan to develop. Uh, these areas, and as far as the police are concerned, uh. Well. I, I don't, I don't think that should rule, because the police force has to be, uh, such that it can. Provide the services needed, and I'm not, you know, I don't see. A bunch number of policemen that need to be hired, uh, if you say, hey, in the red district there, you can ha- you can have it, and besides. Just as council people. just as council people can roll out of the, the, their meetings and go to a, a brew pub that might be across the street, so can the police. Of course, I'm, I know they wouldn't do that while they're on duty. But I, I don't, I, I don't. And, and the chief has said, he, he doesn't, uh, there, there's been a change, by the way, in the police. Scott Bond clearly didn't want any more drinking establishments at all. And the chief, uh, issued his statement through Jordan that it's, uh, uh, he doesn't mind as long as the conditional use part was in there. So I, I don't see any reason not to put it in the commercial districts. The commercial district.
Anyone else on council want to weigh in on this? Well, like I said, uh, I'm gonna assume that everyone's on board with that suggestion. Um, so why don't we go ahead and, uh, make that edit going once? Anyone else, uh, in attendance want to comment on this topic? Uh, John O'Brien has indicated bid supports, uh, Bill's, uh, suggestion in the chat box, FYI. Chat box, I sound like a anyway. Um, what's the, uh, next item on your agenda, Kevin?
Yeah, the last, uh, next and last, uh, hopefully, is the, um, previously discussed planned university campus ordinance. Let me pull that up here. Bear with me one minute. As you'll recall, uh, we actually had this, um, set for a council meeting. Uh, I guess almost a year, a year ago. We were gonna advertise it. Um, unfortunately, there were some concerns over the West Goshen ordinance. If you recall, they were gonna include some um, student housing just south of Rosedale. So the borough decided we were gonna hold off on the ordinance at that time. West Goshen revisited their ordinance. Uh, they removed the student housing on the south side of Rosedale from their ordinance. So we wanted to reintroduce this planned university campus ordinance for consideration and we, so we can then incorporate it into its overall zoning update. And kill two birds with one stone.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. And if I recall, the last time we had discussed this before West Goshen made their change, council was in agreement to move forward with this. It was the West Goshen change that caused us to pull this back, but they've, they've unchanged their change. Uh, so it seems like we should go back to, uh, you know, the, the position we were in previously, which is like, which is in support of this. I, I know we have some folks in attendance that want to talk on this, but before we get to that, does anyone on council want to discuss, um, this issue? Uh, all right, I know John Valella is here. John?
Am I okay to go?
Yeah, go for it, please.
Um, I just, I'd just like to speak to one, uh, one area in this, um, in the, in the district as is proposed right now. Uh, we've been in a lot of conversations with, uh, with leadership, both in, in the township and the borough about the, the residence hall. And, uh, the feeling we get from the, uh, council, Borough Council, was that if we're gonna do any more housing, that we, they'd like us to keep it in, in the, um, in our super block, so to speak. So, uh, there's, there's one area under the bulk, uh, area in bulk regulations where we were hoping that uh, the council would consider a change. Uh, Brian Nagel had sent that over to Kristen, uh, where we were asking for what had been permitted in, uh, all the other times that we did residence halls. Uh, where in the case of residence halls, the permitted height shall be no more than 90 feet, with a minimum setback of 20 feet. Uh, and that would provide the additional height that we might need for any kind of residence hall we'd have to put in there. That becomes real critical now, especially since, uh, Borough Council had taken the, uh, heights down to like 40 feet at one point. And, you know, we're building, uh, the Science and Engineering and Commons Building right now in that, in that, with that low uh, height. And it's sort of, we had to spread it out to, to get what we needed.
So sorry, John, this is, um, something that it may be helpful for Kevin to translate.
Sure. So under the proposed ordinance, um, that was originally discussed, any building that was gonna be constructed on the super block, you could go up to 120 feet. But anything above the 60 foot, you'd have to have a one-foot setback for every one-foot increase in height. Uh, the university is proposing, and you'll see here in letter B in blue in the track change, they want to allow the residence halls, just a residence hall, no other building, up to 90 feet to match the minimum setbacks of the other buildings that are on there, which is 20 feet.
So lo, so long story short, they wouldn't have to move the building back further to get the additional height based on this proposal.
Correct.
But, but, but only a residence hall. That would, that would apply to a residence hall.
So I mean, I think in cert, in certain areas of the university, that makes perfect sense. You know, like along Rosedale Avenue, which is south facing, you know, a 90-foot building is not going to have any impact on any borough residents. Uh, and, you know, like, you're gonna see shadows on the super block primarily. Maybe even parts of New Street. But I think if you did that on Rosedale, you know, it's gonna feel like to any resident along Rosedale, for instance, that, you know, the building's about to fall on them. Um, all day, there's gonna be shadows going across their residents. I, I mean, I guess the question for Brian and John, from my perspective, would be, you know, could we further tailor that to the, the specific areas of campus where, you know, that increased height is not gonna have an effect on on other borough residents? You know, Rosedale makes perfect sense. Uh, Sharpless does not make any sense from my perspective to do this.
The, uh, maybe, I was thinking about this, you know, the, the past few days. And John, you may or may not know the answer to this. The, uh, the, I don't know the name of the dorm that's on Sharpless today. When, the older one that's left.
There's Tyson and
Yeah, we have two, we have two on Sharpless. We have Goshen, Goshen and Tyson.
Okay, do, do we know the setbacks today of those buildings?
Those, those are probably more than 20 feet at the moment. And I think the only place I'm really, I'm really looking here is, um, and I'll be honest about this, is we only have basically one spot that we could, that we think that we could probably put a, another residence hall. And that would be where Lawrence is, which would be beside the latest building that we put up, which is Commonwealth.
Okay, well, yeah, I don't think, as Mr. Galley said, I don't think New Street would, you could build a building there that would not ca, cast any shadows on uh, too many houses on New Street. You have the church there.
The park, the parking garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it'd be an issue there. But I think Sharpless Street, maybe we could come up with a setback of, but maybe go out and measure the existing ones. Don't make it any closer than what they are today. For a residential, for a residential building.
Yeah, I, I, I think we could, we could, we could live with that.
Okay.
If we can compromise on the, the two, the two, the two streets, I think that would work.
That, that makes sense to me. Um, anyone on council have any, uh, comments or questions about this proposed change to the ordinance we discussed previously? Who's that? Nobody? Well, uh, again, I'm gonna assume silence, uh, from my compatriots means that they're okay with, uh, with this suggestion, subject to, um, you know, tailoring it a little more specifically. Um,
Yeah, so, Mr. Galley, if I could just, for clarity purposes.
Yeah.
So it would be, in the case of the residence halls, up to 90 feet, matching the existing setbacks of the adjacent buildings. Um, but if they want to go to the 120 feet, they have to meet the setbacks that are spelled out for the increased height.
No, I think they're okay with 90 feet, Kevin. So we can go 90 feet.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. And that, and 20 feet's okay on Rosedale. 20 feet's okay on New and Church. But Sharpless Street, we have, we're gonna go with the existing setbacks.
Just on Sharpless, okay.
We, we should probably do, I guess you're not, there's, nothing's gonna go on high. Um, because there's no space to build anything. But, um, should we, should we consider a Rosedale for High Street? Or that, all that stuff's like right on the road anyway.
Well, I thought I heard, this is Tom, I thought I heard John say that the only place they could build a 90-foot building other than where they're replacing them on Sharpless is on New Street.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the case currently, but obviously, we want to draft this, keeping in mind that, you know, you know, something happens and all of a sudden there's an opening on High Street, I think we should make sure.
In, in the past, there, there'd always been an accommodation for if the building beside it was of a, of, of X height. Uh, we got, we got the, uh, the clearance to, to build at that same height.
Right.
So I, I think Kevin, I, or, I think that, uh, Brian and Kristen can work out the language. That would be acceptable for everyone.
Yeah, and I'm, and I think Kevin and Mike, uh, are on board with thought process. So, uh, does anyone else on council want to weigh in? Just so if this goes wrong, you can blame me in the future. Fair enough. Uh, anyone else in attendance have any comments or questions about the, the proposed ordinance as a whole? And then this, uh, perspective change to, to that ordinance? All right.
All right, thanks. Thanks for giving me a couple minutes. I appreciate it.
Sure. Part of me, uh, feels like when we advertise these changes, we should advertise them separately and do them at the same time.
Well, I, I guess that might be a question for Mr. Estion how we want to go about that. But before we discuss the advertising, um, just to lay out a timeline, we're gonna make all these necessary revisions. Um, it needs to go back to the County Planning Commission, and it needs to go back to the Borough Planning Commission. Um, I suspect that the County Planning Commission is probably gonna want to take another 45 days to review everything. Um, that's worst-case scenario. So we have, uh, June and half of July. I'm hoping we can get this then on the agenda to pick a date for, um, August, if not August, then late of September, and we can finalize all of this. So once I have the recommendation from the Borough Planning Commission, and I have the review letter back from the County Planning Commission, I'll get it on the Smart Growth Committee Agenda to set a date for the public hearing.
Well, I don't think we need to put it on Smart Growth.
Okay.
You have full council here, so uh, re-advertised and I think we're good to go. We just gotta pick a date. And all council can do that.
And the one thing is because we're adding the PUC, that's now a map change, and that involves additional posting and advertisement, but we can take care of all that. I don't see any reason to sort of separate out the PUC. I would put it in here, um, and we just do the special advertising requirement.
Well, I think what Michael Galley's talking about is maybe have a, if we have a, I don't know, the ordinance, or maybe the red line, new, you know, or a yellow, highlighting with, with what the new changes are, that might be helpful for people who are zoning geeks and want to read this stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more thinking that like the rea, the reinitiation of the, uh, university focus plan may not be well-known. And I, I want to avoid a situation where if, you know, somebody shows up with a suggestion that everyone's like, oh yeah, that's a good point. Um, and we wanna, you know, make a, a change to that piece, that it doesn't tank the whole process that we just went through separately. You know, if we just consider them as two separate agenda items at the same time, and, and somebody came in and said, oh, well, you know, we need to make sure you can't build 90 feet in this specific spot. And everybody said, oh, that makes sense. Um, that we can make that change to this and adopt it, you know, a month later, but not tank our process on the other piece. Does that make sense? Or am I?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, yeah, so we basically create two ordinances, what you're saying.
Yeah.
Public suit at the same time. And then when both of them are approved, they'll be codified together.
Right. But that, that gives us a chance that if one, if there's a, an issue with one and not the other, we can approve one and not the other.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Okay with that, Tom?
Yes, and I, I would suggest that we take the comprehensive ordinance first because the PUC has to be, all, all the section numbers have to be adjusted because this was based on your existing ordinance. So there are a lot of editorial changes that have to be made to the PUC. So it would end up being an amendment to the comprehensive ordinance. And then it would be codified.
All right, cool. Any other questions or comments on any of the zoning changes that we've discussed today or that we're considering generally? All right, I think we, uh, we can chalk this up as a success. The next item on our agenda is other business. There's one, one item for cleanup that we discussed at last week's meeting. And frankly, uh, I think it's my fault that we didn't discuss it uh, appropriately. And that's the, uh, issue of hiring Dilworth Paxson. Um, the ask from the law firm in terms of what we're agreeing to is, is not just, um, testing, uh, related to our property, but also authorizing them to file a lawsuit on, on our behalf. Obviously, if the testing supports that. Um, so we need to have a more comprehensive approval in that regard. Um, so candidly, a, as I understand it, all we need to do is vote to approve hiring Dilworth Paxson to represent us and initiate litigation on, on our behalf if, if warranted by their investigation.
Mr. Galley?
Yeah, Bill.
Uh, why can't we wait for the test to come back?
Because, uh, we would, we have to do one of two things. We either have to, uh, agree to move forward with the suit because that's how, you know, Dilworth is agreeing to conduct everything on their own dime. Uh, so if we have them go through that process and, and, you know, don't move forward, that's, uh, money that they've flushed down the drain. Uh, I mean, we could always, I guess, agree to reimburse them for that, but I'm not sure that that's in our interest either. So, you know, the, the, the deal is essentially, we'll do all of this for free, but you have to let us go after, um, the bad guys if, if warranted, so that we can get that paid for for us and for you.
Well, uh, so who signs the papers? We gotta
I mean, I guess Mike would sign the papers with our approval tonight.
What, one thing I would raise, and maybe I should know the answer to this, but was this meeting advertised to conduct other business?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
Awesome.
Does that make sense to everyone else? Somebody willing to make a motion that we approve hiring Dilworth, subject to those understandings?
So moving.
Thank you, Don.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mike?
Ms. Dorsey?
She texted me that her connection's a little bit unstable at the moment, so. That might give you an issue. I'm getting a text right now.
We'll come back to Lisa.
Can I show you a text from her that says yes? Is that, is that legally binding?
Probably not. Let me just move on, maybe she'll
You know what, Nick? Just call, call her on your phone.
Yeah, if you get a verbal.
And hold her up to your microphone. I'm serious.
Put her on speaker, we can do that.
Poor Lisa. Okay, I'll call her.
Let's go. Mr. Flynn?
Bernie had to leave.
Oh, great.
They just want you to gas over speaker.
And identify yourself.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Put her on speaker.
Can you just, sorry, do it one more time and identify yourself?
This is Lisa Dorsey. I said yes to the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Bracelet?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes, thank you all. Thank you, Nick and Lisa for your really integration of multiple layers of technology. Is there any other business from anyone for this evening?
Do we decide on a, excuse me, do we decide on a date?
For a public hearing?
Yeah.
Now, let's, we can probably wait a month or so, Bill.
Okay.
Do we get the reviews back from the Justice County and Borough Planning Commissions?
Gotcha.
Any other business? All right, well, I look forward to seeing you all in person again next month. It's been, been a long time. So until then, everyone have a great holiday this weekend, and we'll see you in June. This meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night.
Good night, thank you.